Right, hello everyone. Welcome to the Overview and Scrutiny Climate Change subgroup. I'm Annette Wright and I'm the Chair of the Committee. The agenda has been on the website for about a week, but we've had some new papers that have just been put on there today, which is two reports from the Tyndale Centre. So we've had a chance to have a look at those, but if anyone else hasn't and you're able to, you might want to have a look, but we are going to have a presentation. What we're going to do with the agenda is move it around, because we had the Tyndale Centre reports first, followed by a report from neighbourhoods, but that was the report that we didn't get on to at our last meeting, and we know there's loads of good work and loads of enthusiasm within the neighbourhoods department on this subject, so we do want to give them plenty of time today. So we're going to take their report first. Just with the minutes, so the minutes of the last meeting have been published, and they're just for us to note, because we're the subcommittee of the full scrutiny committee. There's just a couple of points from them though. One is that councillor Flanagan's apologies should have been recorded, so that was my fault, I didn't pass them on, so if we can include those. I just want to check, I don't know if someone here can answer this question. All the points that we raised in the last meeting related either to the action plan, which we know is coming to the next Neighbourhoods and Environment Scrutiny Committee, or to the climate emergency motion, which we think is also going to be covered in the reports to the next committee, full committee. Is there anything else in those minutes that isn't going to be picked up as part of that process? Does anyone know the answer to the question?
I don't think there's anything specific that we need to pick up. Whilst there has been a hell of a lot of action since the last meeting, I think pulling it all together as part of the draft action plan will be the most helpful way of doing it.
Yeah. So the only other thing was, we mentioned a letter that was going to the Greater Manchester Pension Fund at the last meeting, and that has now gone. So what we'll do is put that on the website with the minutes from the last meeting, unless there's any reason we can't do that. Is that okay? So we'll do that. Okay, so what I'm going to do, we're going to take these, the neighbourhoods item first, and what we'll do is we'll have a presentation first, which I think can be relatively short for this one, and probably be a bit longer for the Tyndale Centre reports. And then I'll take questions from the committee, and then I'll take questions from members of the public. So a few people have written to me already and told me what your questions are going to be, but if there's more people who want to ask questions, I'll try and fit in as many people as I can. But if people can just stick to questions, rather than making very long points, and that applies to everybody. And please use your microphone, and like I just didn't do, please switch it off when you're not talking. Okay, so the neighbourhoods report then, so this is Climate Emergency and Community Engagement Report. Does someone want to just talk us through that?
Thank you very much, Chair. So my name's Mark Rainey, and I'm the strategic lead for neighbourhoods for South Manchester. And I brought along a couple of colleagues with me, so Ruth Billingham from the Central Neighbourhood Team, neighbourhood manager, and also Amanda Salmon, who was the neighbourhood manager from the North Manchester Neighbourhood Team. Therefore, in our discussion, you've got all three neighbourhood teams here that cover the whole city, given all the work that is going on across the city as well. I just want to say a few things just to introduce the paper, so we have got more time for discussion really, because the paper has been live since last October with the meeting, and thank you for letting us go first in terms of getting that discussion going. I think, just with the paper, just say a few things really, is that, one, the paper does provide a snapshot of the range of work that is going on in communities between ourselves as officers, the council members and residents, on what people are doing to actually tackle climate change at a neighbourhood level. And it's very much linked into the day-to-day lives of our residents as well. Secondly, the climate emergency declaration has not only provided an even greater platform for what our community is already doing, but it's also generated lots more ideas in terms of accelerating the tackling of climate change at that neighbourhood level. And for us, we've been listening to those communities and want to embed those actions and ideas in our refresh war plans from April and May this year. It's also very clear from the paper that as the council were not starting from scratch, or as communities are not starting from scratch either. The approach to date has been very much about officers, the council members, listening to what communities are saying and helping them convert their ideas into like real action at that neighbourhood level, and also building some capacity as well at that neighbourhood level. Now, in the paper, I wasn't going to go through all the detail in terms of what's happened, but the way we structured it is to say what has happened to date in terms of what people are doing, and also those future opportunities that residents and communities want to do. And they've been themed in five areas, one, clean air around schools, so protecting our future, sustainable transport and active travel, recycling and composting, so avoiding unnecessary landfill, the environment around us in terms of the greening and the biodiversity agenda, and also climate change, what can I do myself in terms of like information, education and action. So what's happened to date and the ideas going forward from our communities, and then we finish off with just some next steps for delivery, which is grouped into four areas in terms of that strategy and the governance, in terms of how making this happen at a neighbourhood level, communication, which there was a communication planned in the process being developed to get out those key messages. And also, a big ask from our communities is about themselves sharing their experience and their ideas with each other across the city, because different communities are at different levels and different knowledge, and how we can really help facilitate that, and what those tools and the capacity that we can develop to make things happen, because there are lots of ideas, and I was speaking to councillor Goodwin, making it happen, and through officers supporting our communities, Goodman, yeah, sorry. So that's what I was going to say, and just to get that discussion going in a way, yeah.
Okay, so have the committee got any questions?
Thanks, thanks for that, Annette. And thanks for that, Mark. And yeah, we've had a very fruitful, I think, discussion, the start of a discussion in our ward, which has been great. My kind of overall question about this is, are two things really. One is about the scale. It's about the scale that we can achieve working with communities when set against the scale of things that we need to achieve. So it's great that we've got residents saying they're going to weed their own streets, just to take one example, but I don't know how many streets there are in my ward, but I would guess there's probably two or 300, and we've got about five doing it. So that's a massive goal, and that concerns me. And then the second thing is about taking it, what might be the steps to take this on further, from the getting involved with your communities and the learning and sharing of ideas so that people can be inspired to do things, to trying to use the power of the city council and the policy power that the council's got in order to scale that up again.
Do you want to answer? Yeah, you're okay.
Yeah, I'll start, anyone you can chip in as well as my other colleagues. I agree, there is a massive climate change, what we're trying to achieve here. I think for us, we have spent our time like listening to what communities want to do. So we've not been saying how people should be living their lives or anything, forcing things on people. The ideas are coming from the community, and for us, it is about those small steps to make a bigger impact. So if we can get our residents understanding, well, from their ideas and what they want to do, and it's how we as officers can help them deliver some of this change, and it do get the scale across the whole neighbourhood. And that's why us as a whole neighbourhood team service, all our officers are going through all the carbon literacy training as well, so to make sure that as officers, we're very clear what the impact is, what are the actions and what we can do. And we're also looking at our own capacity at this moment in time, how we work with our communities through war coordination, through other meetings, and how we can develop those tools and capacity to help people do things. But we do know there is a big opportunity here, or big scale, but it's not just about the council as well, council officers. So at a local level, we work with our housing providers, with the police, the NHS or whoever it is, and businesses. And actually, we've got a key role of helping to pull all that together at a neighbourhood level. So through war coordination and war plans is helping us achieve that or make a bigger difference, to be honest. But we are fully aware of the scale. Is that okay in that one? Yeah.
Okay, Richard.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, thanks for the report. I mean, it reads really well. I think there's a lot of really good things going on. I mean, I suppose I'm always guilty of being very microcosm into my own area. I know that in Disbury, there's been some really good initiatives, resident-led initiatives, and helped along with by neighbourhoods, so I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you for that, and all the support that Diane and Rob give to my ward in particular. I think that reading the report, and specifically around neighbourhoods and trying to communicate the plan, I'm always a little bit concerned that there isn't really that central theme throughout the communications and the work that is done. And I think half of that is because there is a focus on bottom-up, and so there's lots of really good small pockets of success stories. But in reality, we really need a almost cultural shift in order to achieve what we need to achieve, right? And, you know, in here, there's talk of clean air around schools, biodiversity, engagement with businesses, et cetera. But from a top-down approach, that I can understand why residents come to me and see an element of contradiction sometimes with some of the council's policies, in particular around, I mean, for example, in my ward, there's two schools that have been built on main roads, for example, just over the road in Charlton Park is the most air polluted school, probably in the north-west, if not the north of England. We see new housing developments with no real respect for biodiversity that exists there, and an incredible amount of tree loss, upwards of 34,000 across the city. So I also think it's probably time for a little bit of top-down. So what role does neighbourhoods have, I guess, to be the leadership that the council needs in order to ensure that it's influencing business, that it is, you know, making it quite clear to all demographics within the city that this is the issue that it is, as well as championing some of the bottom-up, resident-led projects?
I've got John Connor as well, so I'll take your question as well.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, thank you for the report, enjoyed reading it. I guess like councillor Richard, you are in a bubble, so I represent Piccadilly Ward, and you kind of look at what's going on within your own neighbourhood, and you know, that's fantastic stuff. But I do want to pick up on what Mandy said about impact and around size, what we're doing. You know, it said that in the city centre, we're doing car-free days, closing down streets and kind of giving them back to the people, which I think is really good. But I was a bit disappointed around, you know, part four, accelerating our impact actions going forward, that we weren't looking to expand upon that. Whilst, yes, we're looking to bring those car-free days to other parts of the city, we weren't looking at expanding the size of the road closures, and I think that's something that we could really look to doing, you know, around obviously International Car Free Day, you know, stuff like that, I think would really send an important message whilst reclaiming our streets for people in the city centre and across the city.
Yeah, do you want to take those too?
Just in terms of that last question then, so in 4.3, so we do say about more car-free days, so that is a priority for us across the whole city. So if that needs to be a bit more explicit in terms of geography, yeah, that is, for us, it's implicit, yeah. So to reassure on that, that's a big priority for us. I think just in terms of neighbourhoods, I think we're quite in a unique position of probably, if we start off, we've got so many different relationships with our partners, with our businesses, with our residents and with our community. So we as officers and myself, you can see the climate change and tackling emissions is coming up in every meeting that we are having with all those different stakeholders. And for us, it's about feeding this back into the centre, so we can make sense of what people are actually saying. Internally, the neighbourhoods, we are now leading the work stream catalyst for change for the Zero Climate Change Action Plan 2038. So Fiona Worrell, our strategic director for the neighbourhoods director, is the lead for that work stream, and Carol Colley, our chief executive, is chairing the overarching group. So we are using these different mechanisms to feed back all that intelligence that we are picking up at a local or a citywide level in terms of what people want to do, and how we can convert that, well, into a strategy, but also into meaningful action. But also, for meaningful action, what needs to be behind that to make it actually happen as well, in terms of the resources, our capacity, skills, training, everything that we need to do. So that's where we are as a neighbourhoods directorate, is making sense of what is happening on the ground, and feeding that back in, really. Yeah, I don't know if anyone else wants to come in.
Yeah, I can just talk about some of the work that we're doing in Newton Heath in terms of engaging with the businesses there. So we're going to be doing a project on the High Street, working with the traders around putting together a business pledge, and part of that business pledge will have to include work on the climate change agenda. So that will also include about keeping the environment clean, having waste contracts in place, but we'll also be doing some work with the traders and providing training for them on the climate change agenda.
Excellent, yeah. I'll just say a little bit about car-free planning in the city centre. So I'm involved in a project group which is made up for the city council, and Salford City Council, TFGM, the local care organisation, I'm sure I've missed out something really vital there as well, colleagues from highways, events and myself. We are looking to do something on World Car Free Day in city centre, which will be bold and ambitious. We're also looking at the Clean Air Day in June, and in between, those will bookend a programme of what we'd like to see as regular closures at the weekend in city centre. And it's part of making that shift to having spaces instead of streets, encouraging people to use public transport, walking, cycling, and developing a habit, a habit around the way we travel, but also a habit about not driving into the city centre. So that's something, it's the first year, will be 2020 of doing this, but our aspiration is that in five years, we've got something much more business as usual, that's where we're going as an officer group. I need to talk to the exec member about the detail of all this, but this is what we're working on. And then just another thing to point out, I mean, I agree, we're doing lots of small-scale activity, and we need to have some system changes. And one of the things that happened last year was, we introduced recycling for apartment blocks, which is one of those big steps forward. So it's working out that it's not just the bottom-up, but it's how do we change the way we deliver services? So that's an example of it.
I think I'd add to that, you're absolutely right about the top-down as well as the bottom-up. And I think some of the pieces of work that are underway, like the city centre transport strategy, the work on the local plan, some of the stuff that's coming back next time around the planning framework, is an important part of that, because you need to do both.
Okay, so anybody else? William?
Sorry, I'm just picking up on, in fact, that theme. I mean, it's the carrot and stick, isn't it? And I think who's got the stick and who's offering the carrot, I think comes in both directions, and I do think, I mean, when you look at the activity that is going on, I mean, it is a massive challenge to, we all accept it is a massive challenge, but it does demand personal change and organisational change. And I think there has to be a lot of more, in some respects, expectation put on people to make that change. One of the things we talked about, I think we mentioned at last meeting, but Ruth and I have certainly talked about, is mandatorily, if, you know, take NIF funding as a prime example, you know, you give that out only on the basis that you're getting a return in terms of engagement in this sort of issue. So and I think there's other examples of that, from a policy point of view or a contracting point of view. I mean, I know we're doing all of these things, but I think there needs to be almost more overt change of behaviour and pointing out to people that they need to change their behaviour if they're going to engage. It's, I personally think it needs to be a stronger message, I think, I suppose that's what I'm really saying. And absolutely, it needs to take people along who don't want to be taken along, and there are a lot of those people. And if we don't actually take some of those, get some of those people engaged, we won't actually achieve what we've got to do. So I mean, that's describing the challenge, I know, but I think we need to keep that mental state, because if we don't, the people that aren't interested will be the reason why we don't achieve it.
Anyone else from the committee want to come in again? Yeah, go on, Richard.
Yeah, just to add on to that really, because I think that personal action is another, like a point of failure that could exist in the comms plan, because obviously we require personal behavioural change, full stop. But there's also a point of failure in where this, you know, the report that you've provided is really good news, but the point of failure and trust with residents will come when they do not see that sort of principle reflected in all of the actions of the council. So planning departments, planning decisions, major strategic frameworks, relationship with procurement, for example, you know, the list goes on, which undermines all of the really good things that's happening at a neighbourhood level. So I suppose my plea, and it's more to Carol than anything, is to ensure that, some of that we cannot change, some of that is national legislation, which quite frankly, I can't see changing for quite a while at the minute, but from a council perspective, you know, in terms of leading the way, top-down, is to ensure that there is a level of principle that is reflected in all of the decisions of the council.
Yeah, go on, John.
I wouldn't want to not respond to a plea. I think a couple of things I'd say to that, I totally agree. The neighbourhood work's really, really important, because it gets the engagement and the examples of what works, but we've got to use a lot of the other levers as well. There's a big piece of work happening at the minute around our procurement approach and framework, testing it in highways, and that's specifically bringing in questions that are evaluated around the impact on carbon, for example. So we are starting to test and really pull those levers. The next step, once we've done that, is to really kind of up the profile of some of the work and be really clear around our expectations.
Yeah, and just one of the things we want to do with this subcommittee is to look at some of these particular areas. So we've got planning on the agenda for the next one, and just so that we can all, if anyone can hear me, just so that we can all understand, you know, what the constraints are on us, but also how we can operate within those constraints and how we can move things forward. So that, I think that is all happening. Do you want to come back once more?
Just a really quick one to Carol, really. In terms of the procurement question, does that mean that we're looking at, you know, putting a pound sign on emissions when we look at procurement? Is that the goal?
Sorry, remember my microphone, I think that's the next step. So the first step is understanding as part of the procurement process, the impact and the changes that suppliers are making on their direct, indirect carbon emissions and the other work that they're doing. But ultimately, we're looking at how we look at the carbon pound as well as the financial pound, but that takes a wee bit of working through.
Okay, I've just got a few questions myself, and then I'll just see who else has got questions. I know there's, someone from Rybank Fields wants to ask a question at least, but there may be others. Just to take us back to the original climate emergency motion then, can you just tell us how many wards have now had their events? And are we on track for all to have them by April? And are we on track for all wards to have this incorporating the ward plan by April? And where are we up to with the carbon literacy training within neighbourhoods?
So working backwards then, so in terms of the training, we've, over half of our staff have completed training before Christmas, and the rest are going through the training next month and early March, and that'll be all neighbourhood team staff have been through the one-day course training with Manchester Metropolitan University. I've done it, and I found it really informative, and it taught my thinking in terms of our high approach, this work and with the communities as well. So that's the first thing on the training. And then the second thing is linked to the meetings in the wards. What we've been doing over the past six months, climate change has been discussed probably in almost all ward coordination meetings, and what we have seen happening is that some wards have had separate climate change discussions or meetings with the community, and others have got some plans. So just to think, a couple of weeks ago, Charlton Park had theirs, Charlton have got theirs tonight, and other wards have had theirs as well. So by the end of March, every ward in the city will have discussed it, and have done something to inform those ideas to feed into those war plans for April 20 onwards. So, and we have committed to that for declaration as well. And what we've wanted to do is take a leaf from the ward as well, in terms of how members wanted to approach it and the communities, and that's really probably for us paid off with that flexible approach as well. So that's on track. Yeah, yeah.
Excellent. Sorry, do you want something else?
I'd just say, going back to councillor Jennings's point about the behaviour change, and I think what we are seeing as well is quite interesting, is that residents are also probably challenging other residents, not in a negative way, but in a more constructive about their own behaviour and what they can do in the community. And that's really useful, to be honest, because it's not about, what has not come across the public sector, saying X, Y, it's residents to residents, so that's really useful, to be honest. I think what we are doing, I know there was a lot of work with our communication directorate, is showcasing what communities are already doing to tackle climate change, and that is coming, because there's so much happening. You can see from that page, that's only a snapshot, but we need to get that message out there a lot stronger in terms of what communities are doing, so other people can actually think, oh, that's a light bulb, that we could try this in our community if it fits, or we could do X, Y and Z. So that is coming as well, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Mandy, do you want to?
Sorry, I know you wanted to move on, but it was just, I think, we're just reflecting on something that happened this week, and it relates to what Carol was saying about highways department and the way that they're changing. I think that this, we need to be really careful about how we communicate this. I think there was a press release went out that said that, you know, if we're going to grow as a city, then we need more roads. And you can imagine the impact that that had on the cycle lobby on Twitter. And we don't necessarily need more roads, we need to be able, we need to find ways of getting more people around more quickly, that doesn't necessarily mean more roads. So I think we need to be, we need to make sure that the communications departments are aligned with this agenda as well. I'm sure it was just a careless misspeaking, but it's, we can't afford to do that.
Yeah, thanks, Mandy. Now, I've got a question about Rybank Fields. Now, just, does someone want to come up and ask the question? But just to say, this very, very similar question was put to the full Neighbourhoods and Environment Scrutiny Committee last time, which we're all part of, which we're all part of except for councillor Shilton Godwin. So if you can kind of summarise it a bit, because we do all know what the issues are, and we've already agreed to take that away from the full scrutiny committee, but the officers may not have all that detail, so they'll need to have enough to answer your question.
Okay. We did actually just, we did submit a second question, did you get that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it just the question at the end that you want to ask, or is it with all the preamble?
Yeah, thank you. Right, okay. Thank you for allowing me to address the committee today. My name is Julie Ryan, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Friends of Rybank Fields Community Group. It's our position that council planning policy must be changed to ensure that the city's existing green infrastructure is first and foremost preserved by creating a mandatory brownfield-only development policy. According to Manchester City Council's Five Year Housing Plan, which runs from 2018 to 2023, Manchester currently has over five-year supply of deliverable housing sites, even if only sites that already have planning permission in place are considered. We're only partway through year two of the Five Year Plan, yet the figures clearly show that Manchester has in fact got seven-year supply of housing sites with planning permission in place, and eight-and-a-half-year supply from all sites, including in place, and eight-and-a-half-year supply from all sites, including those currently without planning permission. These figures refer to housing deliverable from brownfield sites alone, yet this council, having declared a climate emergency, is currently sacrificing areas of this city's green infrastructure in addition to all those brownfield sites in order to subsidise other boroughs' housing deficits. We think this must be stopped. Moreover, rather than affording any real protection for our existing green spaces, the current Manchester Green and Blue Infrastructure Strategy reads like a manual on how to tick green boxes in order for a developer to get planning permission. This must be amended to include adequate protection for existing green and blue infrastructure. DEFRA have stated that proper stewardship of our natural world is at the heart of responsible government and that going forward, it will be necessary to deliver a 10% net biodiversity gain on all new developments. On paper, this sounds like a positive move, however, again, it gives no real tangible protection to existing green space. It is of course necessary to ensure more sustainable and carbon-neutral development, but living walls and green roofs do not make up for the loss of destruction of natural habitat. The planting of grass verges and a few lollipop trees to replace the woodland, grasses and shrubs that are systematically being destroyed by site clearances for development is mere tokenism. Many academics eschew the premise of net biodiversity gain altogether, maintaining that the losses, especially in terms of community and human impact, far outweigh the gain. A paper entitled 'What is Lost Through No-Net Loss?' by Professor John O'Neill, Pulsworth Chair in Political Economy at the University of Manchester, argues that the concepts of natural capital and ecosystem services that underpin the no-net-loss approach to environmental policy cannot capture important dimensions of value and that are central to human wellbeing. Furthermore, we need to ensure that a diversity of green space exists within our city to benefit not only us, but also the insects, plants and animals who all contribute in mitigating climate change. In April 2019, campaign group Rewilding Britain launched a petition calling on the government to restore nature on a massive scale to help stop climate breakdown by rewilding a quarter of the UK's land. Within two months, 100,000 people had signed to show their support and trigger a parliamentary debate, which took place in early November. The House responded unanimously in favour of the petition, summing up that rewilding is essentially integrating natural processes into land management and acknowledging that much of the government's spend to tackle climate change from 2021 to 2026 will focus on natural climate solutions. Our green spaces may not always look pretty and manicured, yet areas of scrub, overgrowth and weeds are arguably more important than city parks in sustaining important wildlife habitats and mini ecosystems. In conclusion, all existing green space within the Manchester Borough must be saved. Both the council and landowners must be held accountable for this preservation by ensuring that these vital areas are afforded protected status, for example as local nature reserves or managed in association with local community groups or partners such as Fields in Trust. For our planet's and children's future, we must protect our existing green infrastructure to ameliorate the negative effects of climate change. What steps will this committee and Manchester City Council as a whole take to ensure that this will happen? And can a local ward, ward plan help to achieve it? Thank you.
Thanks very much. John, have you got a question relating to this question? Okay, yeah, yeah.
Because it wasn't a question, it's a statement and there's a lot of things I support in it, I think it, it wouldn't do it justice for us to look at it here today. I think I would recommend that, that, well, it would have been helpful for the neighbourhoods to have had that there meeting. However, if that could be wrote out and handed back to that committee so we can look at that, I would assume that members would be supportive of putting it with the other recommendation that we had last meeting and recommend that officers come back with a full report on that. There's some stuff in that I would support. So I think we wouldn't do it justice here, and it's not fair on the full neighbourhoods committee not to be engaged in that.
Yeah, is, is the committee all right with that, that we pass this to the, the full neighbourhood scrutiny committee, which is already looking at this issue? But I think, I mean, I could answer some parts of what you've asked, so I don't know if any of the officers want to, to come in about the ward plans. The question, the, the actual question is about how this can be incorporated into ward plans. So I had a discussion this morning that covered part of that, about our ward plan.
But Chair, I've done our ward plan. If I had that, I would have changed my ward plan. So I think we need to hand it back to the full scrutiny to see if there's valid points in that and why we can't relook at our ward plans. So I think, you know, by answering questions here confuses the situation. We should have a, a full approach to the whole question of how we're dealing with the blue and green infrastructure, rather than just piecemeal.
I, I don't want people to go away without any answer to the question. I, I can give an answer to that question unless any of the officers want to do it.
I think for, for me, it links back to what Carol was saying before about on that top-down approach. And since then, we are now going through the process of revising our local planning for the city. So a lot of those documents or themes that you mentioned, clean and blue infrastructure, biodiversity, climate change, planning, will be completely factored in to that process. So for us then as officers, we would then be fully considering what that means at a place and ward level in terms of opportunities. So that's for, for me, not to repeat any discussions that other committees is how we would, would work.
Yeah, I mean, just as an example, in our Hume Ward Coordination Meeting this morning, we discussed this very point about things might not look pretty, but they're very important, you know, and how can we protect those sort of spaces? And how do we get people involved in looking after those sort of spaces that they might even be, not be aware of, or spaces that need to be looked after? So I think, you know, these discussions are, are taking place in, about the ward plans, I think. So I think that, because I told you I had to be very specific about ward plans, so I think that is the answer to that question. But the whole issue of the green and blue infrastructure and all these points that you've made, I think we, we've already said we will take back to the full neighbourhood scrutiny committee where, where that's already told you that you will get a response to the points that you've already raised there. Is that all right? Okay.
It's probably also worth noting that the work plan for the next committee is receiving a report on the role planning policies, local and national, can play in reducing CO2.
Okay, thank you. Has anybody at all got any more questions? Who hasn't asked any questions yet? Yeah, do you want to come up? Well, you need to come up and say who you are and then you can ask a question.
Follow up, Retta Moore from Save Rybank Fields. Do you have the date of when that meeting is, please? And could you just restate what it is, please?
It's the next meeting of this group on 18th of March at 2pm.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to try and move on if we can. Is, are we ready to move on or is there something desperate that any of the committee want to ask? No, are we all right? Okay, right. Thanks very much, everybody. That was great. So we're going to move on to, there are two reports now from the Tyndale Centre, and the first one is about the date by which we can realistically become zero carbon. So we're going to take that one first. Now, just as people are coming up, we, the committee haven't had this paper for very long at all, and we've got loads of questions, but what we thought is if you could take as long as you need, really, as long as it's not hours, just to explain the whole presentation, that will hopefully deal with some of the questions that we've got without us having to ask them. So, you know, if it's 10, 15 minutes, however long it takes, if you can just present the report and then we'll see what questions we've got after that, if that's okay.
Thanks, Chair. I'll just do a, a very brief introduction before I introduce Tyndale colleagues. So I'm Johnny Sadler from Manchester's Climate Change Agency. You might recall, we, we originally commissioned Tyndale to do a very similar piece of work to this back in the summer 2018, where we asked them to advise on the right climate change targets for the city. That resulted in the city council formally adopting science-based targets back in November 2018, so making Manchester one of the first cities in the world to do that, which is great news. Since then, the science has moved on, as has international best practice, as you would expect, as you would expect. So in November of last year, we asked Tyndale to revisit that piece of work and make any recommendations that they thought were appropriate to ensure that the city retains its leadership position in terms of its commitments on climate change. There are four, four bits to that piece of work. One is around direct emissions, which Chris will present on this afternoon. Second bit is around emissions from flights and aviation, which John will present on. And then two other bits that we won't cover today, but which will come back through neighbourhoods committee and executive, one on indirect emissions or consumption-based emissions, as we might call them. And then the fourth bit around a methodology to help organisations in the city to also set their own science-based targets. So that piece of work is live at the moment. It'll be complete by the end of February. We will publish it and we will publish it alongside a Manchester climate change framework for 2020 to 25, setting out how the Climate Change Agency and the partnership thinks the city should go about meeting those targets. So you'll see all those documents in full in due course at the end of, end of February. But today is just an opportunity to present to you a work in progress. So these aren't final recommendations, work in progress, and really keen to get your comments, views, questions, to make sure that we've, we've presented something which is as clear as possible to you with a view to it going in front of the, the city at large in a few weeks' time. So that's just a brief introduction from me, and without any further ado, I'll hand over to, to Dr Chris Jones from the Tyndale Centre.
All right, thanks. Hopefully you can hear me now. So as, as Johnny said, I'm Chris Jones from the University of Manchester's Tyndale Centre, and I'm going to be speaking about the first work package around that piece of work that we've been asked to revise, which is around the direct or the, the energy-only CO2 budget that's previously been set for Manchester. Just for a very, very quick bit of background, responding to climate change in a meaningful way requires limiting CO2 emissions over time in particular, and that, that limit should be set in relation to a climate change target, such as the Paris Agreement, which frames a, a temperature target of well below two degrees Celsius of global warming. Efforts to reduce emissions, sort of the reduction rates, so how fast they have to come down, primarily depend on the remaining emissions left in the budget, so not just what you have in the future, but also the effort so far, how much of the budget's been used to date. And that, that average reduction rate and the starting point that you, you take, take that from are things that determine things like the point at which you might have to be reaching near to zero or, or at zero. So I think those are the key points necessary to navigate through this presentation. The scope of this work, in particular, focuses on that Manchester energy-only CO2 budget, which is a 2018 to the end of the century budget relating to energy emissions, what we call scope one and scope two, so fuel used in the city, but also electricity across all sectors within the city. It's about, the, the target that that relates to is about making a fair contribution to meeting the objectives of the United Nations Paris Agreement, which is, that's a well below two degrees temperature target, but also has principles around equity, so how to shape how those, the global emissions in particular are distributed. The outcome of that initial piece of work was a series of recommendations, the key ones being a total carbon budget for Manchester for the 2018 to the end of century period of 15 million tonnes of CO2. And this would require an average reduction in emissions of 13% per annum from 2018 onwards. So we've been asked to primarily review this in relation to updates in the latest science, in particular, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change's special report on 1.5 degrees, degrees Celsius. So the reason we're doing that is that the previous set of recommendations back in the 2017, 2018 period were based on an earlier assessment report from the IPCC, the Synthesis Report, which is a, a review and recommendations based on the, the latest science. That fifth assessment report, which was initially released in 2014, was updated at the sort of beginning of November 2018 with this, with this latest report, which is typically abbreviated to SR15 or SR1.5. And we've updated the Tyndale carbon budget accordingly. So the, the main takeaway is from SR1.5 are re-emphasised, to re-emphasise the critical importance of staying well below two degrees and increased, increased perspective on the, the, the risks associated with 1.5 and, and reaching two degrees and above, and that this requires urgent and wide-ranging reductions in CO2 emissions, starting immediately at a global level. It also provides an updated understanding on the relationship between CO2 emissions and global temperature change. The outcome of this in particular is a larger global carbon budget for temperatures than is recommended in the fifth assessment report. So it changes the, the, the CO2 limit for a particular temperature target. So it provided a different, different understanding of that relationship, which is a key part of, of setting a carbon budget and therefore an effective target. It also provided some additional information on the, the uncertainties related to non-CO2 gases and climate feedbacks, which we've also incorporated into our approach to budget setting. So the updated approach, the work we did for Manchester was the, the first carbon budget we did. We've since done an update that can be applied to any part of the UK. And this, this updated approach to carbon budget setting has a few key features. The first, it retains that Paris Agreement framing that we mentioned at the beginning. It uses the, the latest IPCC report, so SR1.5. In addition, it also has a modified estimate of global cement production emissions based on improved estimates, and also a reclassification of some developing nations, primarily some of the Gulf states that have a very high human development index, but are traditionally been classed as develop, developing countries. And this is again, an improvement to the methodology that has created slightly, slightly less impact on the, on the budget, but is still an important feature to flag. So when we compare the Manchester budget as it stands, based on the, the previous method to the current method, we get a carbon budget of 18 million tonnes CO2 from 2018 to the end of the century, and this compares to the budget of 15 million tonnes of CO2 for the same period from the previous methodology and, and approach. This is 19% larger, and again, this is primarily due to that, that revised understanding of the relationship of CO2 to temperature rise in IPCC SR1.5. The other key feature is when we've done this, this updated methodology, the start year is 2020 instead of 2018, as a function of the time we, we did the analysis from, because 2018 and 2019 are obviously historic emissions by the point that the budget starts, which is why if you look on the chart, you can see there's a kind of, a little sort of flat line that start before, begins the reduction curve, and that's continuing the, the current trend of emissions reduction before the budget period kicks in. However, for the purpose of this comparison, we've taken the 2018 period to 2100 period to show the, the budgets side by side. The updated budget would require a reduction rate of around 12% per annum, beginning in 2020, out to the end of the, the budget period. This compares to the 13% per annum reduction rate required by the, within the previous budget, starting in 2018. These are some tables that are produced that sort of represent the data in a slightly different way. They show the, the change in emissions compared to 2015, which we use as the baseline year to the year of the Paris Agreement. The MCCAR5 is the, the budget based on the previous version from the fifth assessment report, which is the current budget for Manchester, and the other, other column in that table is from the updated method based on SR1.5. So the, the change in relative emissions is, is less in the updated methodology for 2020, however, by 2020... However, by 2030, you broadly reached a similar point, you should have broadly reached a similar point in terms of change in emissions from the 2015 baseline. And this is because the budget is being used in a slightly different way. However, within both budgets, emissions from the city would need to be down very close to zero in this sort of mid 2030s, end of 2030s in both budgets. So they're common in that sense. The other table presents that data in the form of the five yearly budgets, which we provided for the initial report for Manchester back in 2018, showing those side by side, again, showing that the budget is slightly larger with the recalculated SR1.5 budget. However, the discrepancy becomes very slight in absolute terms as we move past 2030. This is just a quick point on the relationship between budgets, emissions reduction rates and the years that you reach a point of zero emissions or very low emissions. It's to highlight the fact that the budget is the key metric for measuring success on climate change. And the reduction rate and the point at which you have to be at zero really depends on how much budget you have remaining. The lines are a sort of stylised view of that. The blue line at the start is the current trend of around 7% per annum reduction, which has been the average for the last sort of five-year period. And what the graph shows is what happens to the curve, essentially the reduction rate and the point at which it gets very low. If the action is delayed to 2022, so you can see the orange line there, it sort of does the trend until 2022, then it drops in line with the budget. That's a 15 million tonne budget, which has a particular curve of, I think that one is 18% per annum, starting at that point. However, if meaningful reduction is delayed until, say, 2024, the sort of yellow line, so amber coloured line in there, you get a steeper curve. And obviously, if you go out as far as 2027, you basically have to reduce emissions at something in the order of 50-60% per annum to stay within the budget, because so much of the budget's been used in the period up to that point. So this is again to illustrate that the budget is the primary thing to stay within. The reduction rate is something that changes in response to what's happened in the past. And similarly with the endpoint year, will vary depending on how much of the budget has been expended to that point. Just a slightly clearer example of that, that's got the scatter, sorry, the Manchester budget, which is the blue line, the 13% per annum average overlaid over time. And the other lines there, the orange line and the grey line are sort of scenarios where the action is delayed by a particular time period. So you could see that in the case of 2024, if you only had 7% per annum until that point, the reduction rate would have to hit 25% per year, reaching our definition of zero carbon, which is sort of minimal residual emissions, last tail, 5% of the budget by This shows that the budget can be distributed in different ways and staying within the budget. However, it also highlights a potential risk that if insufficient action is taken in the near term, it transfers a significantly higher requirement for reduction to a later point. So 25% year reductions are incredibly challenging. And obviously, if you delay that even further, you probably get to the point where you exceed the budget, because it's not possible to reduce a sufficient rate. We're also asked to review zero carbon in 2030. This is slightly challenging, because we have the budget-based approach and we have insufficient characterisation of 2030. The endpoint year in itself isn't sufficient to construct a budget to compare directly. So what we basically would say is whatever budget comes with that 2030, you could have various pathways to reaching zero in 2030, which would result in different levels of carbon emissions. The key point is that the Tyndall budget that we recommend, both in the previous version and in the updated model, this essentially the maximum amount of CO2 that we recommend staying within the Paris Agreement. Therefore, any other target may be suitable. However, it would have to result in a carbon budget that was less than that maximum budget. And it would have to ensure that it wasn't transferring emissions cuts too far into the future. We'd also recommend that it should at least, it should be greater than the 13% per annum reduction rate if it was to be looked at. Again, we didn't really understand sufficiently when the start year would be, the reduction rate or the budget associated with a 2030 zero carbon year to make a full direct comparison. However, if a budget associated with that target meets those two criteria in particular, then it would be suitable within the budget, within our framework. Conversely, if it was used to allow for a slow reduction rate or a delay in action or more carbon emitted over the period of time, then we would say it's certainly not a more ambitious target and it's not a suitable target. Our draft recommendations, therefore, although the updated methodology based on the latest IPCC report suggests a maximum budget of 18 million tonnes could be adopted by the city and stay within its Paris Agreement framing, we think that staying with the 15 million tonne budget would be also appropriate. It's below the maximum, but it also shows ambition and leadership. It's also a budget that there's quite a bit of work around already. It's certainly within the threshold of, it's certainly compliant with that Paris Agreement objective. And we would say that it's suitable to retain that budget as it is, at least. And in terms of revisiting the budgets in the future, as we do with the original report, which advocated for reviewing in response to new scientific synthesis reports from the IPCC, which we've done in this case, we think the budget shouldn't need revisiting until there's another such report that fundamentally changes our understanding, or maybe it's at a five-yearly interval as a kind of check to see where things are. But I think our overriding recommendation is to really focus on getting as close to the 13% per annum reduction rate and meeting interim budget targets. The longer there's a delay in getting onto this kind of track in emissions reduction, the harder it will be to stay within the budget, I mean, whatever budget, primarily, particularly the 15 million tonnes CO2 budget. And that basically the council should move to evaluate the targets perhaps, again, at this criteria of every five years or when there's new science, but primarily use its energy on delivering these 13%, greater than 13% per annum reductions. I say greater percent, because if it's the case that in 2018-2019, a 13% per annum rate wasn't achieved, that means greater than 13% per annum is required going forward from 2020. Thank you.
Okay. The committee got any questions? Yeah, Amanda.
I'm trying to synthesise all of this in my head. I did have an opportunity to read it beforehand, but it's an awful lot to get your head around, isn't it? Can I just, I want to just check my understanding first. So my understanding is that what you're saying is that because of developments in understanding about how climate, how the different gases affect the climate over time, actually, a new assessment would actually give the city council a more generous approach in the future. But that is working to the Paris Agreement, and we all know that the Paris Agreement is 2% or, and we are already seeing what we are seeing at 1%. So it seems, so you're suggesting that we stick with those original tougher targets. Is that right in summary?
Well, we are suggesting staying with the tougher target. I think it's important to clarify that our target and the Paris Agreement is for well below two degrees C. So we've picked a global target in the previous methodology and this latest methodology that is sufficiently, well, the size of that global budget relates to, you know, a very low probability of reaching two. So it's sort of taking a very prudent approach to meeting the terms of the Paris Agreement. And our methodology also doesn't include the use of carbon removal technologies, which remain quite speculative at the moment. However, if those technologies were to be deployed, they would mean that this budget would be more in line with the 1.5 budget, assuming that that technology was ruled out. So it's a very precautionary budget, but it's in line with well below two degrees, not, sorry, not two degrees, probability of two degrees.
Anybody else? John, did you?
It's the old question, isn't it? If I, this is presented to me today, I didn't have a chance to read it. I was looking at all the documents, trying to support what we're doing, and I'm a bit confused, so I would have rather a bit more time. But I'll throw a few questions. As we move to electric vehicles, we'll reduce our emissions and it looks better on paper, carbon reduction. But it only is green as the green electric we're putting in them. So how do you measure Manchester's approach to reducing carbon when I'm getting my electric from a non-green source? And that is in the control of government. So we may look good on paper, but actually, are we doing somewhat good? So it's really, how do you measure the electric we're putting into our systems? And are they green?
Yeah, so the Manchester budget includes electricity used in Manchester on a scope two basis. So this power being used now is based on the grid average emissions factor. So all electricity, energy used within the city is included in Manchester budget. So an electric car, the emissions from that are being counted within the city. It's CO2 emissions accounted in the city.
So the follow-up, as we move to more electric vehicles, have you factored in the fact that there may well be a proportion of that non-green element, and so it's counterproductive?
That's not something we cover in this report. We just set the budget. However, obviously, electric vehicles are lower emission, even when the grid electricity is factored in than a diesel or petrol car, especially as the grid continues to decarbonise.
Chair, that's the point, mate. Absolutely, we want electric vehicles, reduce emissions, it's better for the health of our city. But if it's been, the power's being generated from a coal-fired, you know, electric station in York or wherever, then in some ways, I just want to measure that and be honest about it, that's all.
Yeah, that is measured in this methodology and pretty much all calls off the grid now.
Just coming briefly, Chair, we'll pick up on some of this, councillor Flanagan, in the climate change framework that an outline of will come to neighbourhoods and environment on the 5th of February, go to, and then it'll go through executive on the, I think it's the 11th of March. But just a couple of headlines. It's not within the scope of this piece of work to set out how we meet the targets, whether it's decarbonisation of the national grid or anything else. This is really about just setting at this point, what are the scientific parameters for what the city needs to do? And it's the framework that'll define how we go about meeting those targets. That's the first point to make. Couple of headlines, couple of spoilers that probably won't come as a huge surprise. When we talk about reducing the emissions from the city's electricity use, there'll be two headlines in the framework. One is around continuing to influence and lobby government around decarbonisation of the national grid, because we will continue, we think, to have some degree of reliance on the national grid, as will all other UK cities. And the second thing that's likely to be in the framework is around significantly increasing the amount of renewable power that we generate in the city. So about 1% of Manchester's electricity demand is currently met through locally generated renewables. That's the lowest of all of the 10 Greater Manchester districts. So one of the things that the agency and the partnership will recommend is that we significantly increase that.
Anyone else, Richard?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, thanks for that. I mean, I did get a little bit lost, so I do apologise if some of my questions you've already covered. I really want to focus on just the target aspect, because I think that, you know, we want to make sure that residents can understand this, right? So the headline figure that we got from the IPCC stuff is 2030 irreversible position, right? So we're talking like, you know, from a big scale here. If global behaviour does not change by 2030, some of the changes that we're seeing now is irreversible. Now, I'm not trying to, I support the carbon budget model, and I know that doesn't necessarily fit with that headline target. But how can we take this piece of work, knowing that our residents in the city have seen that irreversible 2030 target, and say that, you know, what we are doing is not quite in line with the message that we're getting from the IPCC?
So I think it's important to clarify, the IPCC doesn't say that in 2030 there are irreversible impacts. Irreversible impacts can happen at any point. 2030 is the point at which we might, well, on current progress, we're likely to reach 1.5. They say between, at some point between 2030 and 2052, we'll reach this point of 1.5 emissions. I think that 2030 is probably the right end of that spectrum, given the current global emissions. However, I think the real take, that's not the point at which emissions have to stop. Emissions really have to come down immediately and be as low as possible by 2032 or any year in order to reduce the risk of crossing a particular temperature threshold. So, I mean, it certainly is the case that we are likely to see these 1.5 associated impacts as early as 2030, based on what that report says. I think the report also says that urgent action has to begin now and emissions, you know, globally have to reduce, not just by where they're at in 2030, but also where they get to by, ahead of 2050 as well. So it's, I think it's important to really take what the IPCC report says in the whole and get a more nuanced understanding of it. And to, do you have a point to add to that? Can you flick it back?
No, just to emphasise that this focus on emissions reductions above 13% per annum should really be where the core attention is paid. And that's what delivers the lower risks of exceeding the most dangerous aspects of climate change, delivering short-term, near-term, immediate action on emissions.
Yeah, I hope that was helpful in that way. I think it's that key point about focusing on the emissions reduction immediately and getting to as low as possible, sort of by 2030 or by 2029, 2035. You know, it's all part of a pathway to limit emissions as much as possible.
Yeah, go on.
And just another point of clarification, really. And when we talk about this budget, we are talking about all of the CO2 emissions within the conurbation of the city. Is that correct?
All of the energy-related CO2, so that's, emissions associated with electricity, that, so those emissions are outside of Manchester, but Manchester responsible because it's at the endpoint use. This budget, the 15 million tonne budget, doesn't include emissions from land use, which is another source of CO2, or processed cement. I don't actually think there'll probably be processed cement emissions in Manchester. There is a separate recommendation in the report we did for Manchester in 2018 about land use emissions and how, I believe it's by 2038, John, you did that. There's a point at which Manchester has to move from being a net positive emitter of CO2 from land use to a net negative. So more carbon dioxide is removed from the atmosphere through land use than is released through land use. But that's another aspect of the target, the recommendations we initially proposed to Manchester. And those recommendations stand as well. So improvements to land use, CO2 from land use change are needed in Manchester.
And just to add to that, the report we won't talk about in detail today is around the city's indirect emissions or consumption-based emissions. So in rooms like this, I tend to point at things like electronics, clothing, furniture, et cetera, construction materials, things that are produced outside of the city but which are produced in response to our demand and our consumption here. It's an area of science, I think colleagues would agree, that's not as well-developed as measuring direct CO2 emissions. But the But the trajectory that we see cities like the C40 go on, who tend to set the benchmark for international best practice, we see them starting to set objectives and targets on consumption-based emissions. So that's why we've asked colleagues from Tindall to have a look at that as well. We're unlikely to come up to arrive at a set of numerical targets at this point in time, I think, but we'll have a much clearer set of recommendations about the areas where we are, our consumption in this city is leading to emissions in other cities around the world, and therefore the areas where we need to take action.
Anyone else got any questions, Mandy, again?
So actually, that leads to exactly the point that I made, which is my understanding is that these direct emissions are actually only about 2%, or estimated to be 2% of our total emissions. So is that right? And if it is, obviously, that's very small in comparison with other areas that we might influence.
Sure. I mean, I don't want to prejudge the analysis that Tindall colleagues will do. I know that they've not had a chance to get into this area of the brief just yet. Probably one of the most up-to-date bits of research, certainly that I've seen, is it comes from the C40. They estimate that the C40 members, so 94 of the biggest cities around the world who take this agenda very seriously, their consumption-based emissions are about 60% higher than their direct emissions. So Manchester emits about 2 million tonnes a year from our energy use in buildings and transport. Our consumption-based emissions are therefore likely to be in the region of 3.2 million tonnes. So direct emissions are a lot more than 2%.
Okay, yeah.
So, for example, does this budget here include the emissions that are emitted by all the cars travelling within the boundaries of the city council? Or are those included in the direct ones? Because obviously, the council itself can only directly influence the cars that its staff drives and its staff behaviour, and can seek to influence driver behaviour through the building or not of new roads, the provision of or not of cycleways, better forms of transport, but can't actually control it. Where does that bit sit?
Well, I mean, emissions from all transport in the city are included in the budget. So we use the government's dataset from Bares, that allocator, emissions from transport, from including the motorways and rail, for example, to the city. So they are within that budget. And same for households as well, household energy use is in there as well as, so it does require sort of coordination across everyone in the city for that.
Okay, William.
Sorry, this is really complicated. I'm telling you that. There's a graph on here, which is budgets rates at end of year. I don't know if you could just go to it, which describes delayed action means faster reduction in the future and earlier zero year to stay within the same carbon budget. What is the biggest inhibitor to starting earlier and getting more reduction? Because it sounds, it seems a bit counter, you're suggesting the later you start, I mean, this is statistic, I understand these statistics, I'm just interested, that it appears on those curves, the later you start, the faster the reduction. Why can't we just start now and get fast reduction? You know, what's the biggest inhibitor to stop just that principle? Do you understand what I mean? You know, because it seems like you almost get a reward for starting later, and that, to my mind, is completely, you know, just, I mean, that's the way I'm reading those curves, and maybe I'm reading those graphs wrong, tell me if that is the case, but I just thinking, right, well, we'll get, we'll have it both, both ways.
Yeah, we all know the point, yeah.
It might, I'm just going to take a step back, probably from the non-scientific perspective. So first off, picking up on the point around scale of emissions, the 2%, I think you've probably picked up, is the proportion of emissions in the city that are produced by the city council. I think the key point for me out of all of this is irrespective of our end date or anything else, the action we take in the next five years, particularly the start of the next five years, is really critical. So taking action quickly to reduce our emissions is the most important thing we can do, and that's where the at least 13% year-on-year reduction comes from. What the graph shows is, if it takes us longer to get to 13%, we've actually got to achieve something like a 25% reduction in the later years of that, which is, would be incredibly difficult to do. So that's, I think the graph is saying the use we've got to reduce by, not what we can achieve. The other way I look at it is, I don't know how helpful this is, it's kind of like a bank account with 100 quid on it, and we've got the budget of what we can spend over five years. So if I burn all my carbon in year one and spend 50 quid, I've got to cut across the remaining four years, and that's a lot harder to do.
I'd just add to that, that this, again, you know, make the point, this is around setting some scientific parameters, it's not a commentary around how we do it or necessarily viability. Couple of points I'd add to that. If you take into account, we've had a 7% year-on-year reduction in emissions, a good chunk of that has come from decarbonisation of the national grid. It's not to say we haven't been doing things in the city, we have, that kind of more bottom-up activity does contribute. But a good chunk of Manchester's savings, Birmingham's, Leeds, et cetera, comes from decarbonisation of the national grid. So there's a question in here about how difficult it is to go beyond that 7%, to get to 30, never mind beyond it. The second point I'd make is that we did do some modelling when we proposed the targets back in 2018. That modelling, which Anne Thesys did for us, showed that following the Tindall Centre curve, based on existing technologies and policies, is, well, we can't actually, even if we pull all of those levers to the maximum extent, we couldn't reach that 13% year-on-year. So there's still a gap, even if we did everything we know about today.
Okay, it's 20 past, I've got John, and then I know I've got some other people who want to ask questions, so we'll just take a few more questions and then see where we are. John?
It's really getting to the bottom, if this is a scientific demonstration, we're all going to agree to it, aren't we? Going to say, that's what science is telling us. I think the problem we have is what you're trying to say, let's detract that from the pragmatic things that we've got to do. So, yeah, I'll set them targets, but what are we actually going to do as a city, and how much of an influencer? And while I was teasing a bit about energy, I'm fully aware that, you've already said that we're counting in the motorways. We have no control over motorways, parts for Prince's Parkway, because it comes under the highway agency. What we really need to do is, all right, I can accept this report, but it's more important to me is, how pragmatic can we achieve these when we've got a government that may not want to work in ways? We might have a prime minister doesn't want Heathrow to be expanded, and all of a sudden gives a carrot to Matt, you know, it's all these factors. So I think I'd like to look at what we as a city, as citizens, as a council and partners do, which is pragmatic to achieve this, and what is outside our, you know, power at the moment? Because the danger for me is, we accept this, and then we go, oh, well, it's the government. I don't want that. I want to know how we can keep pushing government and other agencies to achieve, and not throw our hands up in the air and say, well, the government took airlines out of it and things like that, and, you know, diesel trains.
Does anyone want to come back on that point? No?
I'd agree, absolutely. You know, the framework document, the draft framework, will bring an outline of to neighbourhoods and environment on the 5th of February, will answer some of those questions in high-level terms. I think the important point I would make is that we will, we're pushing the partners who sit around the Climate Change Partnership as far as they're able to go. So they're all developing plans for the next five years, a number of which will be published over the next couple of months, which is great, but there will still be gaps. And we're asking fundamental changes in the way that every organisation, every individual in the city works. So there will be gaps, and I think, you know, I will try to be as honest as possible whenever I come to this group and others around what those gaps are. And I think having an honest discussion about those gaps is only helpful. The second point I'd make, and you've already touched on it, is absolutely, this has got to be about a partnership between the city, Greater Manchester and national government. Because there are certain things that are within our control and certain things that aren't. And I would hope that COP26 in Glasgow later this year starts to give UK cities a platform for a much stronger collaboration with government than the one that we've got at the moment. But we've an opportunity to test that over the next 10 months.
And irrespective, the pragmatic bit, I think, is irrespective of what everybody else does. As a council, we've got to show a bit of our leadership role and achieve as much of that as we can.
Okay, has anyone else over there got any questions they want to ask on this? No? Don't have to. Yeah, do you want to come up to this desk at the end and just switch the microphone on and just say who you are? And then, yeah, I'll take you, so, yeah.
Hello, my name's Adam Pearce, I'm an independent sustainability consultant resident in Rushham Ward. I've worked on climate change for 10 years. I can see quite a few concerned faces from the councillors about the 15 million tonnes target. And what Johnny said about the gap in policy measures is something that we have to be very creative about, because they've thought as much as they can already about what they can do with the consultancy experience they've got. We've got a lot of creative people in this city, and we have to think very, very creatively about how we can actually create policy measures within our control, testing legal limits we have to, to get further, faster, quicker, and take residents along with us. So, yeah, I think we need much more increased action from council enabling smaller outfits and, you know, anyone who really wants to get involved in this and actually providing suggestions, whether it be something like actually a scrappage scheme, for example, to get cars off the road and give free travel to residents who scrap their cars instead. That's a potential thing you can do, to get cars off the road. So, yeah, that's my sort of just point, rather than anything else.
Yeah, do you want to come up?
Firstly, I just wondered if I could clarify something that Johnny said.
Sorry, can you just say who you are, please?
Oh, sorry, I'm Claire Stocks, and I'm a campaigner with a number of environmental groups and a resident of Manchester. Johnny, did you say that we'd achieved 7% carbon emissions cuts in the last year? Because I thought the last report that you put out was 2.5. I just wanted to clarify that point.
Yeah, so the average, and Chris, you might want to comment this, the average over the last five years, I think you said, Chris, was 7%. But, yeah, the figure, the reductions figure over the previous 12 months, I won't quote a figure here, because you might have read our report more recently than I have, but whatever the figure is in there is what we estimate for the previous 12 months, recognising that we don't have government's latest data whenever we produce the Manchester Annual Climate Change Report. But if it says 2.5% in it, it will be in that region, and we'll produce an updated figure in this year's report in July.
Yes, have you got a question based on that?
Thanks. Yeah, my point is actually more about how we talk about, how we talk about the job of the council in relation to carbon reductions. And this point has already slightly been made, but I want to emphasise it, which is that we continue to hear sort of senior leaders in the council talk about this issue, which is good, but there's an angle and a line that is often used, which is the council is only responsible for 2.5% of emissions in the city. And this is often used by people responsible for this area, most recently at the Neighbourhoods Committee just gone. And it completely belies the truth, which is that the council actually has influence over a far greater area, and we've just been talking about the policy areas that we need, and the previous citizen made that point exactly. And I would like to ask this committee, in its role as climate scrutiny, to make sure that that point is taken back into the whole council, included in communications, but this is an important leadership point. This has come from the Climate Change Committee, the statutory body set up as a result of the Climate Change Act, which carried out some research that showed councils are actually, can be responsible for up to 40% of carbon emissions in their area, when you take into account the policies over which they have direct control, which is highways, planning, et cetera. And as the previous person meant, yes, maybe we have to take on some legalities around planning and about the things that we're going to actually put through, and let, you know, the government try and sue us or whatever. But this is a fundamental problem we've got at the moment, the council, senior leaders continuing to say we're only responsible for 2.5%, and that's not true. And I'd like this committee to form some sort of response, whether it's a letter to all the executive members, or ask the Manchester Climate Change Agency to formalise that percentage, do a piece of work that shows it. So that's my request to this committee.
Yeah, I think we can at least give you part of an answer on that. Carol, do you want to?
I just wanted to come back on that. I think what I was trying to clarify was, when you look at the measurements in the pie chart, the 2%, it's a direct emissions from the city council. But a major, major part of the action plan that's been developed is around that policy and influencing role, and how much can be reduced overall. It's not just focused on that 2%, because that would kind of be missing the point a bit in what we've got to achieve. So I just wanted to give you a bit of reassurance on that.
That's, I really appreciate that, and I certainly have taken some of that from what's been talked about here. But we're talking about the leader of the council, we're talking about the executive member for the environment, who is still talking about 2.5%.
So this action plan that Carol's referring to is coming to the full Neighbourhoods and Environment Scrutiny Committee next month. So I think we need to have a look at that document and see what the emphasis of that document is, but certainly the committee that Carol's chairing within the council is looking at it as a whole, and this subcommittee is wanting to look at all these areas like planning and development and all these things at future meetings, to take all that into account. So I think the change in emphasis that you're looking for is already there. Okay, is that all right?
I totally get that from this room, but I'm not hearing it out there from other leaders of this. That's the point I really wanted to make, because the problem isn't in this room.
Okay, thank you. Right, so one more question. Yeah, do you want to come up? And just say who you are and switch your microphone on.
My name's Louise Sheridan, and I'm a local resident in Huy. And following on from some of the comments that have just been made in relation to a lack of leadership, I recall that the first item on the agenda, the gentleman who was sitting here, mentioned something about the initiatives being bottom-up, but we need something top-down, a change in culture and a culture shift. I've brought this here. This is Manchester People, it's Manchester City Council's own propaganda sheet. This was from 10 years ago, it's the New Year 2010 edition. Manchester Rises to Climate Change Challenge: City Pledges to Cut Carbon Emissions and Residents' Energy Bills. It says Manchester has launched ambitious plans that will see the city leading the fight against climate change. It mentions the plan entitled Manchester A Certain Future. Our collective action on climate change has now been launched. It describes how the city's CO2 levels can be reduced by 41% over the next decade. Now, we've just heard here that the year-on-year decrease has been 7%, and much of that is accounted for by the decarbonisation of the national grid. So it seems to me that what we've got here is, the council has a leader, but there's a lack of leadership in that there seems to be, the council doesn't know, the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing. For example, we've heard talking here about car-free days in the city centre, but recently the council initiative to compensate for the inconvenience of roadworks was to give free car parking. And in relation to the green spaces, here it says that, sorry, where's it just gone? There's mention here about how there's the need for green spaces. It also predicts, this is going back 10 years, that the plan predicts there will be a need to create more green spaces, gardens and green roofs. Whereas we're hearing here that the campaign to save Rybank, you know, there are plans to destroy green spaces, yet here, 10 years ago, the council was saying that there was a need to create more green spaces. Sorry, I'm just a bit flustered.
I think we got the point.
My point here is, will you call the leader of the council here to account? You know, I appreciate that there is a lot of positivity in this room and there's a lot of ambition and there are good intentions, but this is 10 years ago. What's happened, you know, it's not been delivered. And this is the council's own report that was delivered to Copenhagen. So, you know, there needs to be some accountability for the failures previously and also some leadership going forwards.
Okay, thank you. Can you switch your microphone off? I don't know that anybody in this room is in a position to answer where we've got to from where we were. Are you, yeah? Okay.
Very briefly, I won't comment on all of that introduction. The 41% carbon reduction target set in the Manchester Certain Future Strategy was similar to this process derived based on some analysis from Tyndale Centre colleagues. We're actually on track to meet that 41% reduction, so the annual report that we produced last year has got the data to underpin that. But, that said, in a refrain you'll hear from me and the agency and all of our annual reports is that despite all of the very good progress we're making as a city, on track for our 2020 targets, we are not at this point on track for where we need to get to to meet this new ambitious set of targets. So I'd have those two things in mind. Yes, we are on track for our 2020 targets, but the next phase looks even more ambitious than the work we've done to date.
Okay, can I just pick up another point then about electric vehicles? So just one more point. I recently asked if we could have some electric vehicles in my local community and the response that I received from the council was that they did, basically, they were pleading poverty, don't have the money to put the infrastructure in place, even though there is a Greater Manch, supposed to be a Greater Manchester plan to install charging points. But they were saying that the best they could do was to work with Enterprise Carsharing Club to provide hybrid vehicles which emit petrol. And the estate where I live is the Bentley House Estate, which is currently being affected by the roundabout roadworks, which is bordered by two of the worst polluting roads in Manchester with killer levels of air pollution. And yet the council, I received a council saying that, you know, there's no money, we can't have charging points installed for electric vehicles. So again, it's, you know, on the one hand, there are all these, you know, nice reports, targets, but, you know, where's the actual real action? Thank you.
Okay, I think that last question is very specific to something that's already been raised. I don't know whether we should just get back to you on the specifics of that, if that's all right, because I don't know whether anything's moved on on that or not. Right, we'd need to move on to the next report very quickly, but does anyone else want to ask anything? John, do you want to?
It was just on a point in reply. I think we're all on a journey. She mentioned the leader of the council, I've always saw that Richard was, you know, talking about this years ago. It isn't up to Richard, it's up to all of us as residents of this city to be challenging this, not for him to give a speech or show leadership, we have to show leadership. And what I've seen happening over the last couple of years, especially with climate change activists, they've took control of that and brought it to the front. You know, some of the tactics have argued about were wrong, blocking trams, a bit bizarre. Someone made an idea about changing policy on scrappage and giving free transport. I represent a ward where a couple, say a year ago, I go mad about that, great idea, my residents don't have buses. Believe that or not, we don't have buses in Utony. So that wouldn't work. You know, we could go through all this and for Hume, I love Hume to bits, you have a charging point in your ward at near Kimby the Sea. No, but I'll just give an example, we're all on this journey of movement and it isn't about us attacking each other, we've got to be careful that we don't look at blockages.
Okay, is this the question?
Well, the question is to the officers, do they believe that everyone's got to take responsibility, not one individual?
Okay, I don't think that really is the question, but what we were talking about, is it? But what I do, what I do, can we just not interrupt the, yeah, can we just, all of us, try and stick to what we're actually talking about, which is this report that's just been given by the Tyndale Centre? So, you know, I appreciate it's sometimes difficult for people who aren't used to this not to go off at tangents, but I think we could all avoid doing it, that would be helpful. So just to conclude this bit, can I just say, because really, I'd like to just sit down and see how you come up with all this from start to finish, because I think that's the only way I'll fully understand it. But what you have said, Johnny, is there's going to be another report about indirect emissions, there's another report about land use, there's another report about methodology for other organisations. Once all this is out in February, will that answer some of the types of questions that are being asked of what's included and what isn't where? And will we be able to follow this all through in a simplified fashion?
All of these reports will be in the public domain. I suppose we will present them, one of the things that we use the agencies to try and present this stuff in a simplified manner as it possibly can be. But one of the reasons that we've commissioned people like the Tyndale Centre and asked them to do presentations like this is that this stuff's pretty complicated. So I very much welcome finding this amount of time on this very busy agenda, but I think there's probably a limit to how much we can simplify this. But if we're not getting this across to this committee and others in a way which enables you to really understand it and own it, I need to know that because then we need to go back to think about how we present it. So that's probably, we won't tone down the science and the complexity, but how we present it is what we'd welcome a steer on. Just as, and a tiny point, we're not going to produce a report on land use, but the others that you reference, yes.
I just think, do we want to recommend, because all of this will come to the Neighbourhoods and Environment Scrutiny Committee, but I think it's at least worth giving all these other reports this amount of time, which is something we could do at this subcommittee if we want to suggest that to the Chair. Is that all right?
Chair, I think we should accept the report and go forward. I'd like to see more detail behind the report, not less, because I need to understand what I'm signing up to and the pragmatic approach we're going forward. So if there's background paperwork, I'd like to see that.
Is that all right? Can we do that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, also, Chris, you're conducted, I think we're at the end of the presentation. Are you happy, because there's a lot of questions in there, are you happy with us getting in contact with you? Brilliant, thank you.
Okay, shall we go on to the other report then? Is that all right?
Hello, thank you for the invitation. My name is John Broderick and I'm a lecturer in the Departments of Mechanical, Aerospace and Civil Engineering and work on research as part of the Tyndale Centre with my colleague, Chris. What I'm going to talk to you about today are the emissions associated with aviation, particularly looking at those from the aircraft themselves that I've highlighted in the orange text here. So we have, if we're thinking about the aviation industry as a whole, there's many elements and sources of emissions that might be associated with it, from the airport's own operations, the buildings at the airport and the ground vehicles on one side, and then the passengers and the staff based at the airport and the other organisations at the airport, air traffic control, for instance, on the other side. And largely, these sources of emissions are already considered within existing targets. So it's the aircraft that I'm particularly discussing in this presentation. So the background for this is that if we look at air traffic trends for the UK and for Manchester, we see that there was a dip after the recession, 2007, eight onwards, and then a recovery in growth in terms of both passenger numbers, that's the green line in the figure on the left-hand side, in freight handles, that's the orange line, and in air transport movements, the number of aircraft taking off and landing at our airports in the blue line. So we are seeing an increase in all of those measures of activity. Along with that, we're seeing an increase in CO2, so that's the graph on the right-hand side, which shows emissions per year. Well, we had a very fast rate of growth through the 1990s, a drop due to the recession and then a return to growth subsequently. And this means that aviation emissions are 40% higher than they were in 1990 and continuing to grow. This is against the backdrop of the rest of our emissions, as Johnny says, coming down substantially. So the share of UK aviation, it's share of UK emissions that are associated with aircraft has been increasing and is currently approximately 10% of UK CO2. Within that, Manchester Airport is increasing the numbers of passengers travelling through it, it was up 2% in 2018, and the share of passengers within the UK that are being handled by Manchester Airport as a whole, and that's currently approximately 10% of UK passengers. So I've used a dataset from the Civil Aviation Authority that surveys passengers in departure lounges and finds out, well, asks them a great many questions that are of commercial interest to airports and strategic imports to government, strategic importance to government. But I have been looking at the origin of those passengers as a way of allocating the emissions that are associated with aircraft movements to the residency of those passengers. So if we take the pie chart on the left-hand side, the large majority of emissions, the grey area, are associated with other UK airports and residents of other cities. And then we move to the coloured wedges, we have the blue here, which represents the passengers at Manchester Airport who originate outside of the city region, so outside of Greater Manchester. And that's about 2.6 million tonnes of CO2. And then in the smaller wedge, the blue-green on your screens, that is a composite, and so I've broken that out on the right-hand side. That has resident, that has the emissions associated with residents of Greater Manchester, which is the large solid purple area, and with the missions of residents from Manchester City, which is the solid red wedge on the right-hand side. And that is passengers moving through Manchester Airport but who reside in those areas. The hashed parts of those wedges, again, the purple is for Greater Manchester residents, excluding those of Manchester City, and the red is for Manchester City residents. And that's for journeys taken at other UK airports. So it's recognising that although most air travel undertaken by residents of the city is undertaken from Manchester Airport, there is some use of other airports. And just to give you that kind of background information, the main other airports used are Liverpool, Heathrow, Stansted and Gatwick. So how do we take this source of emissions into account when we're making our planning assumptions for targets? To produce the budget and the trajectory and the pathway that Chris presented to you, we made a deduction at the national level for this industry rather than at the local level. And we first of all looked at what the DFT's forecasts for aviation would be, and that is the thin orange line at the top of this graph. We had to make an assumption about when emissions would move to zero at some point in the future, because DFT expects emissions to be of the order of, they are today, 35 to 37 megatons of CO2 in 2055. But because of the budgeting approach and our knowledge that we have to get CO2 emissions to zero to prevent our continued contribution to climate change, we made an approximation and assumption that this would happen by 2075. That quantity of emissions there that's described by the area under that top line exerted so much pressure on our total budgets that the rates of reduction for the city would be greater than 20%. And so we constructed an alternative scenario where emissions from the sector persist at the level that they are until 2030 and then decline to zero over the period to 2075. And that removes about 500 megatons of emissions from the aviation sector and gives them back to the other parts of our economy, our homes, our businesses, our land-based transport. But it's this solid orange wedge here on this graph that is implicitly assumed in the other targets that we have for the city. And so if we proceed at a higher level than that orange wedge, so for instance, the existing DFT forecasts, then we would have to achieve greater reductions from all other sectors, greater than the 13% per annum from the present day, or we would have to accept a greater risk of dangerous climate change. That's, that green wedge is that 500 million tonnes. So we can think about tracking our progress against that wedge by looking at a share through time. And one proposal is to look at a grandfathered approach, looking at our present use of air travel. And so that's going back to the pie chart and the wedges that I showed for residents of the city. And if we share out that solid orange area between parts of the UK, present use of aviation, we would expect 7 million tonnes of CO2 to be associated with Manchester City. But on average, we use aviation less than the rest of the country. We use it more than the North East of England and Wales, but less than the South East of England and South West. So if we went on a straight population share, we might expect a target that we'd be looking to follow of a total of 10 million tonnes of CO2 over this period to 2100. And so to put that in context, those figures are in relation to the 15 million tonnes for all other sectors and our 0.2 million tonnes annual emissions. Now, we can't combine these budgets all into one. The quality of the data for the passenger survey is not of the same rigor as the emissions data that is collected by BAEs and that Chris used in looking at the other sectors and that Johnny will use going forwards. But this gives you a kind of an indicative way to measure the use of aircraft and the emissions associated with aircraft for city residents and an idea of what the targets would be that you would be looking to fit within. So we make some assumptions here that the choice of destinations is similar for Manchester residents as it is for the rest of the UK. We don't have any data to support that or to dispute that at present. And we know that this is an underestimate because the survey data that we used for the latest year for 2017 doesn't include about 20% of the airport traffic that we know of in the UK. Now, not all of that exclusion is relevant. I don't expect there to be a great use of Bristol, Belfast or Aberdeen Airport by Manchester residents, but it is possible that our residents fly from Edinburgh, Glasgow or Doncaster. So we would expect a small increase in the figures that I presented today. So to summarise, the work that we've been doing so far has highlighted some issues to discuss. So the first is that we can't overlook the emissions from aircraft, they contribute to climate change in the same way as other sources, and they're not being adequately dealt with by international or national policy at present. We need to monitor and account for residents' travel to fit within a national pathway, and we've shown that that would be possible with the CAA dataset. Doesn't include business travel for non-residents, so businesses that are operating within the city but whose staff are not resident within the city, wouldn't be included, save for instance, someone living in Cheshire or Preston but working within a business in the city, that wouldn't be counted by this. And so we would have to gather that data from the businesses directly. It raises the question of whether the airport could become a pioneer organisation, given that we have some control through ownership, to look at measures that could reduce some of the more direct emissions that are within its operational control. And I think significantly picking up on a point that came out of the discussion previously, we think it's important that the city council would work with national government on a Paris-compliant aviation strategy, as we see that technological change is going to be insufficient to deliver... be insufficient to deliver that solid wedge that I described previously. We don't have zero-carbon aircraft and zero-carbon fuels commercially available or even likely to be available in the near term, before 2030. And so a policy of managing demand and provision of capacity that's coherent nationally and that respects that aviation budget that you, you have included within the other targets is an important point to draw on. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Has the committee got any questions, Mandy?
Thanks, Annette. Thank you very much for that presentation. When I read it, I was pretty bemused, but because, but you have explained it really clearly, and I think I've got a pretty good handle on some of the implications of what you're saying. Of course, what I later say is probably going to drive a coast of noise through that, but we'll see, won't we? And the first question is that it's about the impact of the recession, that was really very, very telling really, how much the flights had dropped during the recession, and it led me to wonder whether passenger numbers had dropped because the cost of travel had reduced, and so what the consequence of that might be for policy, if, on terms of like, what impact we might have on price. And then the second question was that I wondered what percentage of overall Manchester's emissions were coming from the airport, not quite sure that I grasp that. I've got some things to say about what we might do on this at a policy level, but I think that's, I'll maybe come to that later, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. John?
I think most of us would agree that we shouldn't be eliminating aircraft emissions. I think it's a failure of government to do that. But I want you to look at the graph with the, the green section, and it goes back to what we've been talking in the previous conversation about what we can influence and do something about. So let's say for instance, government say, no, we're not going to include that. There should be another graph of what the effect of this growth in airline travel is going to cause to the city, where we may have influence. You mentioned construction cement, there was a great programme about India and how they're looking at different ways of producing cement, because construction at the airport has its own emissions, travel to the airport and servicing of it, and what they're saying on your, one of the other graphs, it's within the boundaries. But as growth increases, we could make a real effect, so just rather than looking at this in isolation, what does that growth mean to the other things that affect carbon output or emissions by the growth of the airport? And not forgetting there's two major motorways that are bang on, on top of the airport.
Do you want to answer those two?
So to answer that question first, most of those other sources of emissions would be caught in some other way in national budgets and accounts. The cement production emissions would be accounted wherever though that cement was produced, for instance, in the Peak District, the Castle, Caltham production. So that source of emissions would be caught somewhere else. The reason that we raise aviation as an issue is that at present, domestic emissions are caught within our national carbon budgets, but international aviation emissions are not caught within our national carbon budgets. So to move to another question, which is about how does this sit in context with the rest of our carbon footprint, the total here for the orange wedges, the red wedges, sorry, both travelling from Manchester Airport and travelling from other airports would add up to about 0.2 million tonnes per year, and Johnny says 2 million tonnes from other sources, so it's approximately 10% at present.
Joanna, come back, yeah?
I think you just proved my point. Well Derbyshire have that problem, won't they, because they do the cement and they, you know, we get the stone from them. We're the influencer by expanding the airport in relation to this, or I'd like to see what that growth actually does, because again, it's about boundaries, isn't it? Do we just say that's the Derbyshires and they can probably get away with it because they've got less output? Or do we say, let's build all the car parks over the Cheshire side there? You know, and that's, that's how government deal with stuff, and I think we, we've got to look at this globally as a country, rather than that's our boundary and these emissions don't go over, or, you know, I, so I think, I'd like to see some further work on building up on what the growth would actually mean and what choices we could make, you know, tarmac and all that sort of stuff would be, you know, I don't want to be cynical about it, but I could see ways of fudging figures.
Yeah, there's, there's huge scope for creative accounting here, offshoring emissions has been part of some countries' strategies for a number of years. It's one of the reasons why we've asked for the piece of work about consumption-based emissions, so you effectively end up with a bit of overcount, of double counting. So let's just say, for example, let's assume this phone is produced in Wuhan, a Chinese sister city. Now, we, we need to start taking responsibility for the emissions from that phone. Wuhan similarly will do likewise when they do their own version of these targets. The worst-case scenario there is we get a bit of double counting, but that's the reason why we've asked for that, that piece of consumption-based emissions analysis to say, right, what are the things that we do in the city, expanding airports, buying electronics, buying construction materials from Derbyshire, what are those things that we do here that have an impact in other cities? So to answer your question, we won't specifically do that exercise for the airport or for any other specific activity in the city, but we will have a, in headline terms, an understanding of what the areas are that we need to tackle.
Richard?
Thanks, Chair. I think my question is around the principles of residence-based models, I think, because we've had this conversation numerous times at the Neighbourhoods Environment Committee. And residence models, this piece of work answers the, the question that we asked in the motion, so I accept that this is a piece of work that's been done. My question is around the principle of why we choose residence-based models instead of the other ownership principles that could be applied to us, for example, the stake that we have in the airport, geographic responsibility. And I know that, you know, some of that's quite blunt, but financial stake and through the dividend, you know, it is extremely beneficial for us to have that financial stake. But with that comes an element of responsibility, right? So, you know, 35% rounded up, 35% stake in the, in the airport. There is an argument there to say that we're 35% responsible for carbon emissions from the airport due to ownership. If we owned a building in the centre of Manchester, like the one that we're in, we would take 100% of responsibility over the building's carbon output. So my question, I guess, is why don't we apply the same principle to the airport as we do our estates?
Well, there's the issue of where the emissions are coming from, there's not a clear-cut answer to this. I think it would be reasonable for the direct emissions associated with the airport to be attributed to ownership, so the ground operations and the shopping centre part of the, of the airport. The aircraft that are then using the, the facility, if you were to take ownership of those, in a sense, they would, for coherence accounting, that would have to be removed from someone else's responsibility, and so not of the airlines or of the passengers who are using those services.
Okay, yeah, Joanna?
I mean, I think it's a really good question. John, your, your last recommendation in here about the city council, I think I'd probably add the airport to, to that point about having a conversation with national government and other UK airports about how we stay within that orange wedge. I think the, the reason at this point that, that, that's a list of discussion points is to lead into precisely discussions like that. So Tyndale are partway through their analysis at the moment, these aren't a set of recommendations, they're things for us to start to think about. And I think particularly with a topic like this, I don't think as a city we've had a proper debate about how we manage emissions from Manchester Airport and from the flights that we take as individuals. So I don't expect we will come up with a really clear-cut set of, set of recommendations by the end of next month. But what I do think we will have is some information that helps to underpin a debate around questions like that, which will help us arrive at what is our position, is it 35.5%, is it 100%?
Okay, can I just say that it's four o'clock? Is everyone all right for a little bit longer? I know, we've got more questions. Is everyone okay for a bit longer? Yeah, okay, so I've got John and then Mandy.
My colleague down there came up with a great suggestion about putting it on the back of the shareholders, it makes logical sense. However, you would then also have to apply that to the largest shareholder, who's an Australian pension fund, so that fudges it, doesn't it? Let's get it over to Australia. And this is the, the, I know, but this is the reality of things. You know, I want to know what we can do in Manchester, I want to know what we can do as a country, rather than fudging figures. So the fact is, from the figures we're getting, there's going to be growth, that's going to increase emissions, that's going to, you know, cause problems about carbon budgets. And I want reality where we can actually influence and change things. So it's good to have it. I think the recommendation from this committee should be, we accept the report that's come to us, and that the city council should move to be challenging government to include aviation figures, it has to be covered. And I'd go further, any other transport, diesel trains that come right into Piccadilly Station and, you know, stations right at the city, there's emissions from that, and road networks, the motorways, we've got to have a real look at the proper figures, rather than forging these, playing around with figures, because we've got to get down to pragmatic approaches changing things.
Mandy?
Thanks very much, Annette. I was also thinking about what the implications of this might be for what we might start to do in terms of policy. And it seems to me that disincentivising people from using aircraft when there are very, when there are acceptable other methods is, is a key thing that, that we might explore whether or not any of that is within, within the policy levers that the city council should, should do, and that's something that we could go, we could ask officers to go away and look at. I'm very mindful that we've always said that a just transition is a key part of what we seek to achieve as a city. So I don't think that I would be wanting to say that people should not go on an annual holiday with their families in the, in a plane, but I understand that nationally, it's known that about 15% of people take about 70% of flights, is that the right figure? I don't know if that is replicated in the Manchester situation, it may not be completely right, but what could we do to disincentivise or properly charge, if you like, those people that are, that are, you know, that 15%, because I think of a lot of it will be business passengers as well. So I would, would like to ask that we ask officers to go away and explore what policy levers might be within the gift of the council or where else we could seek to influence so that we brought about a just transition.
Yeah, Carol, Joanna?
Couple of things, I think, looking at it from our perspective, there has been a lot of work, and if you look at the different bits of the airport operation, they're carbon-neutral in terms of their ground operation, obviously it's different with airliners, so I think that is an example of how we have worked with the airport group. I think I welcome the suggestion around the discussions with them, because that's not something one part of the country can do in isolation. But there is also something, when we look at things like staff travel policy, just making sure modes of travel are appropriate for what people are doing, i.e. not flying internally and things.
Has anyone else got a specific question on this report that they want to ask? No, are we all right? Right, can I just take us back to the, sorry, can you come up and?
It's just to request that that work looks at the possibility of impact, introducing a frequent flyer levy at the airport that would raise money and also deter flying for those frequent fires potentially. This is something that we, we would like as campaigners to be looked at as a serious policy initiative that would raise money as well as affecting emissions, but in a fair way. Thank you.
Yeah, we're okay to look at that, aren't we? Yeah.
Just to make a recommendation, Chair, that obviously looking at that graph that you've very kindly shared with us is, I mean, fills me with fear, quite frankly. And I think that it would be very good for the committee to visit the airport, discuss some of the early stuff that, that the Tynall Centre has introduced today, and possibly also levy the same questions that Claire has just asked to the orders of the airport.
So we've had two recommendations, so we're all right with the one of lobbying government on this issue, aren't we? And are we all right with that recommendation? Yeah, so we can, we can do that. Sorry, what was it?
That we ask for officers to go away and look at what policy levers we have.
That's okay, isn't it? Yeah, we are all right with that. Right, can, can I just come back to the original climate emergency motion and just make sure we were doing what we were supposed to be doing? So we've had these two reports, which the motion asked for, just, can I just check, in terms of the first report, we were going to go through a transparent and open review to look at the dates that we're looking at, who's kind of going to take that away and deal with that?
Yeah, we'll pick that up.
And I think other than that, unless I'm wrong, the, getting these two reports is part of what we asked for, and also to call on government to accelerate the reduction of carbon emissions from aviation is something that we'd already asked for, so I think that covers that part of the motion that we had. Is that okay? Yeah. Right, is there anything else on this anyone wants to raise? No, well, thank you very much, everybody, that was really, really useful. Just to finish off the agenda then, we've just got our next meeting, when is our next meeting, Lee? March, that's it. And we're going to be talking about operational estates and planning at that next meeting, and then as we go forward, we'll set different agenda items to look at different aspects of policy and, and what we're doing. So hopefully we'll see everybody there. Thank you very much.